Okay Josh, you good? Mayor, ready to go?
Ready to go? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Good evening everybody, thanks for being here. I'd like to call this meeting to order if we're staying. Councilman Green will have our invocation leaders and our pledge of allegiance.
Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings that you bestow on us as individuals and as a city. We ask for a special blessing on the two young men we're going to honor tonight for saving the life of one of our senior citizens. We humbly ask dear Lord that you will bestow part of your knowledge on us, council, as we deliberate the things for the city that affect all of our citizens. In Jesus's name we pray.
I would like to give a prayer to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, we have some special presentations to do tonight, and first I'd like to ask Cameron Carr and Jaden Mayhew if they would meet me at this podium right over here. Let's get you guys, so, let's see. I'm gonna mess up this presentation, somebody's got on here. Okay, can they see them? Can I?
Josh, can you go to the?
Can you see both of these guys?
Okay.
You got them? Okay. Alrighty, let me see if I can, let me see if I can relate to everyone this, this story and, and these two incredible young men. Some weeks ago, some weeks ago, you guys were riding your bicycles in the area of Church Road, that, that part's right, it. And Mr. Stanfield, who lives on Church Road, had been working in his backyard, and, and some of his movements in the backyard, he, he slipped and he fell, and his, his head was wedged between, I believe, a boat trailer, tire, and the rocks that were just adjacent to that. Have I got that right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And so these, these two guys are riding their bicycles and they hear Mr. Stanfield calling for help, and so they went to where they heard him calling. They in turn went to Jessie and Carol Wood's house, as I understand it, and they called 911, and the ambulance came and got Mr. Stanfield rushed him to the hospital. The doctors at the hospital indicated that had it not been for these two young men and the, and the acts that they got involved in there, that Mr. Stanfield may not be with us. So these two guys are real heroes, and we've got some, the city wants to say thank you in a manner that's appropriate for something like this, and so what we're going to do... I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know what I hit, something, something on here anyway. So, this is a certificate of appreciation, and this is awarded to Jaden Mayhew in grateful appreciation of your heroic efforts October the 11th, 2022. Now, let me decide which one is Jaden. You are, okay. Jaden, turn around and hold, hold that. Can you do that? Okay, let's do this, let's do this next one. This is a certificate of appreciation, and this is awarded to Cameron Carr in grateful appreciation of your heroic efforts, October the 11th, 2022. Cameron, would you hold up for just a minute? And let me just say to both of you that through your actions, through your actions, you brought a lot of great credit on, on, on yourselves, but not only just to you guys, but to the city, to your school, and to the people that live here. You're both heroes, and all this applause that you're going to hear is for you guys, okay? Alright.
Good job.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you guys, great job. Great job guys. Ms. Charlene, if you'd join me here, here? She's representing the Charles Parish Chapter of the National Society of Daughters of the American Revolution, and I think maybe a month ago you were here with several ladies, and, and because I was late, they jumped on me out in, in the hall and gave me a piece of their mind, which I, which I really deserved. Charlene, I'm glad to have you back, and, and I'm gonna give you-
Glad to be back for this one.
We're gonna give you an opportunity to speak, and I'd like to read the proclamation, and Kim has so kindly printed this in large print so that I can see it, and I appreciate that. The proclamation reads, whereas the Charles Parish Chapter of the National Society of Daughters of the American Revolution, that is NSDar, got its charter on October the 24th, 1974, and is celebrating its 50th anniversary of working in this community, supporting the reading and the teaching of the documents for which our country was founded, and whereas the Charles Parish Chapter of the NSDar promotes Constitution Week, the reading of the Declaration of Independence and the Bill of Rights, the preservation of, the preservation of historical buildings, papers, and artifacts for future generations of Americans, and the preservation of records of lineage and American patriots who gave their fortunes, their land, and their lives for this country and our freedom. And whereas locally the Charles Parish Chapter provides support to veterans, a sponsor, a scholarship, they sponsor a scholarship in our high school as well. Now therefore, I Gordon C. Helsel Jr., Mayor of the City of Pecosin, congratulate the Charles Parish Chapter of the NSDar on 50 years of outstanding service to our community, and do hereby proclaim October as the Charles Parish Chapter of National Society of Daughters of the American Revolution Month. And witness thereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Pecosin, Virginia to be affixed this 11th day of October 2022. Charlene, I'm glad we have folks like you and your organization that put our constitution out there so our kids know what it is. So I want to present that to you.
Thank you.
And I know you, you've got something that you want to say?
Yeah.
Okay.
Got some glasses on. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for this proclamation to celebrate the 50th anniversary of the founding of the Charles Parish Chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution. We were founded by Kitty Joyner, an engineer at NASA, and one of the first women to graduate from the University of Virginia in Engineering Program. She was a pioneer in many ways during her life. She, along with numerous other ladies, came together and started the chapter. It has grown to be over 70 members now. Along with promoting patriotism, the Daughters of the American Revolution worked to save historic buildings and sites all over the country. Our chapter also offers a scholarship to a high school senior every year in memory of our founder, Mrs. Joyner. We also sponsor essay contests for elementary school children to promote writing and research on historic topics. We also volunteer at several locations locally to support the organizations and one such as the Pecosin Museum. We honor and, we are honored to be recognized by the City of Pecosin with this proclamation. Again, thank you Mayor Helsel, the City Council, and the citizens of the City of Pecosin for this proclamation.
The next item on our agenda is our audience for visitors, excuse me, we have to, we've got someone from Social Services here, Margaret, I believe it is?
We also have Dave.
Which one comes first? Okay, Dave Callas? We're ready, we're ready, okay?
Good evening Mayor and members of council, everyone watching at home, and those of you here with us in council chambers this evening. Pleased to be here tonight to present with you information about our upcoming Pecosin Seafood Festival. I bring you the good news that this well-beloved community event is returning, and we're very happy to be back. After a two-year pause due to the pandemic, this year's dates will begin this Friday, and of course, all of you at home and everyone with us this evening, you are certainly invited, and we're excited to invite you with us and have you with us. This Friday, October the 14th, through the weekend, October 15th and 16th, the event will kick off at Pecosin Municipal Park. This year, the festival will celebrate its 40th anniversary. The festival began, and as you know, many of you know if you attended the first festival, in June, and it was actually held at Dave Carpenter's Marina. The visual here provided by the Daily Press is an actual picture of the first event held in 1981. The event continued to grow, and later in 1983 moved over to the municipal park between 81 and 83. And then the festival began also during that time, if you can recall, some of you may know, that we even had a parade as a kickoff event that was part of the, of the festival. Many community and civic organizations were involved and continue to be today. We're so excited to bring back this event and make it the 40th year to continue to honor the working watermen of the Chesapeake Bay and the rich coastal heritage of our city. This year's event, of course, will highlight a number of historical areas in the actual industry of the seafood and watermen, seafood industry and the watermen in the Chesapeake Bay. We will continue to offer a number of entertainment stages with various acts throughout the weekend, a juried arts and crafts show presented by the Pecosin Art League, dozens of food vendors, a children's area, and of course, on Friday night, to finish the evening, we will have a nice, nice, a really exciting fireworks show or presentation presented by the City of Pecosin and Dominion Fireworks. Holding with the rich tradition, the festival will feature outstanding regional and, and local entertainment on the Centerra Careplex Hospital stage. Local and favorite Slap Nation will kick off Friday night. Additionally, we will have acts that will include the Heather Edwards Band, Soul Patch, and Crazy X. Sunday will feature a local favorite, the Deloreans, which is a very popular 80s band, and they dress the part when they come. Additional entertainment is expected throughout the weekend to include the Pecosin High School Band, the Pecosin Islanderets, Jack Hayden, The Brew Hounds, Austin Ferguson, Eric Insley, and The Brew Hounds. The event features two stages, one in the Food Court area known as the Taylor's Do-It Center Stage, and of course, the municipal stage sponsored by Centerra Careplex Hospital. We are both very fortunate to have both of those sponsors return for our event this year. The Pecosin Seafood Festival continues to feature the best in arts and crafts vendors, and it's well-known that the best shopping can be done on Friday evening, so please plan accordingly. The show features over 160 vendors and is known as one of the largest arts and craft shows in the region, and perhaps in the state, and we invite you to shop throughout as it features a number of local artisans and those from this region, and a lot of it will feature nautical and unique wares. The festival would not be complete without an opportunity to please your palate and eat your way through the event. We offer, and not we, but our vendors will offer a number of things at the Farm Fresh Food Pavilion, to include but not limited to crab cakes, jambalaya, shrimp, oysters, clam chowder, soft shell crabs, catfish, sea crab soup, alligator bites, and many, many other things, and as well for those that do like non-seaf food items too. The festival is proud to highlight a number of civic and community groups, as well as those that use the event as a major fundraiser each year. And additionally, we would like to invite you to take a taste of the good and awesome sweet kettle corn provided by the Holloway-Moore American Legion Post, and always be sure to get a tasty barbecue sandwich from the Pecosin Kiwanis, and to warm up each evening, be sure you grab a special Pecosin Exchange Club coffee. And don't forget to grab your Lions Club mints on the way out. All of these groups work hard all festival long to include others who park throughout the event to support their causes and provide scholarships, community improvement activities, and local charities. The festival will also feature a variety of entertainment to include rainbow puppets, who will feature on the municipal, I'm sorry, excuse me, on the Taylor's Do-It Center Stage and the Food Court both Saturday and Sunday morning. The Teeny Tiny Petting Zoo will also be available on both the municipal field area on Saturday and Sunday. And a special new addition this year will include the Mad Science, Wacky Science Show, also on Saturday and Sunday mornings, just in time for little ones to be there. We have been very fortunate to have many local businesses and corporations to continue to support the festival. We'd like to recognize those sponsors this year, and I would encourage you to also support those businesses as well. For concerts on Municipal Field, if you plan to attend, it's encouraged that you bring either a chair or a blanket, as the entertainment in concerts are free, and it will make your experience a lot more enjoyable. But we also ask you and encourage you to limit no coolers, please, and leave your pets at home. This year, the festival will have a variety of civic and sports groups assisting with our parking areas, and it too will provide them some very needed, much-needed fundraising opportunities. It's reminded that parking in all areas is $10 per car, and parking is available at Pecosin High School at 51 Odd Road, while parking for the disabled will be available at 830 Pecosin Avenue with your placard and ID to go with it so that we know that you're able to park there. As a reminder, the festival hours will be this weekend coming, October the 14th, from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m., Saturday, October 15th, 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Sunday, October 16th, 12:30 to 6:30. And of course, it would, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the fact that the pecosinseafoodfestival.com website is a great resource to invite others, check out the upcoming news, and find out the most current information that we have to offer about the event. It should also be noted that we don't just want you to spend the fall with us or enjoy this weekend, but we have a number of upcoming Christmas events and holiday events as well in the city, and we're excited to list a few of those here, to include the memory tree lighting on December 1, the annual Christmas parade on December 2, which will follow the path between With Creek Road and Victory Boulevard, and we're currently accepting entries for those at Parks and Recreation Now, and you can visit our website to download an application. The annual Christmas tree lighting will be held here at City Hall on December 8, sponsored by the Pecosin Kiwanis Club with the Frosty Festival, and of course, we're all used to shopping at the Pecosin Art League Holiday Gallery, which will kick off soon and near the Thanksgiving holiday and through mid-December. There's a number of other events to include house decorating contests and letters to Santa, but the list goes on, and I would encourage everyone at home to keep an eye out for more details on those, but at the same time, I would also say, we hope to see you at the Pecosin Seafood Festival because everyone's invited, and we really look forward to hosting you back in Municipal Park this weekend. Thank you.
Gretchen, before you, before you leave, I don't know that everybody knows what goes on behind the scenes. Number one, you just did an absolutely phenomenal job on your presentation.
Thanks.
And, and yourself and the folks that work with you, you've done an outstanding job, not, not just for Seafood Festival, all the events that happened in this city, and so I'm sure I speak for council, and they will speak individually at the end of the meeting, I'm sure, but I'll be sure and thank you for that.
Sure.
And please pass that on to, to your group.
I will.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes ma'am. Okay, thank you again Gretchen. Okay, we now have a report from the York Pecosin Social Services, Margaret Mack Yaro?
Yaro.
Yaro, I apologize. Margaret Mack Yaro. Is that mic on?
Should be.
Okay. Hey Margaret.
Hello.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. Thank you, I'd just like to say thank you to the mayor, the city manager, and the council members for allowing me to come today and do just a brief overview. members for allowing me to come today and do just a brief overview of some of the services, all of the services that we supplied during the last year, and kind of give you a scope of what programs that we run at Social Services and different community events that we're involved with. So I apologize for the PowerPoint today, but I'm going to try to make through it with my readers. So our story for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, basically, we start with our mission statement, talks about how we believe that our mission is to assist in the basic needs of our citizens, to promote self-sufficiency, and to protect vulnerable children and adults. The summary of our, well, not to skip our values, when we talk about our customer service, attitude, dependability, teamwork, and communication, that's an area for both localities, York and Pecosin, we take extreme pride in. We happen to be one of the top performers in the state of Virginia. I was fortunate enough to come into this position and have that excellence, but I've also, within just shy of two years, been able to see us reach beyond some of those benchmarks, to include having some delegates and some officials from the state come and visit us to look at how it is that we have reorganized and improved some of our performance message, performance measures, not that they weren't already at the top. So the summary of our impact for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, as a function of administering a total of seventeen different programs, we were able to serve thirteen thousand five hundred ninety-six individuals who received direct support from YPDSS across the county of York and the city of Pecosin. How does that break down? Two-hundred-and-fifty-eight individuals assisted through our employment services and childcare programs, four-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixteen citizens had requests for assistance received and processed for benefits, six-hundred-and-seventeen individuals assisted through our service intake program, one-thousand-and-seventy-three child protective and adult protective services calls were not just answered, but they were managed by our services staff and went to ongoing case management. We have Adult Protective Services, which receives and investigates reports of abuse, neglect, and exploitation of adults sixty years of age or older, and incapacitated adults eighteen or older. Some of those protective services are needed and accepted by the individual and an APS worker. We can arrange for a wide variety of health, housing, social, and legal services to stop the mistreatment or to prevent further mistreatment of individuals that are needing our care. In fiscal year twenty twenty-two, our agency responded to a total of three-hundred-and-two APS calls. Out of those, two-hundred-and-twelve became APS investigations. The agency is also mandated to monitor adult guardianship cases and had one-hundred-and-fifty-eight cases this past fiscal year. In addition to ongoing cases, the agency received two-hundred-and-eighty-three requests for adult services during the fiscal year, and two-hundred-and-fifty-six were in York County and twenty-seven in Pecosin. Services that may be offered under adult services can include home-based care, transportation, adult day services, adult foster care, nutrition services, and also legal intervention if deemed necessary. One thing I would like to add to that is that we're working on some individual programs for York and Pecosin that are currently at the ground and being kicked off. One of them for the Adult Services Unit is looking for companion care through a volunteer-friendly visitors program, and that's in partnership with the Peninsula Program, which our Adult Protective Services Supervisor actually initiated, developed, and ran. And it's a service that's much needed, not just for our citizens, but also to alleviate some of the calls that law enforcement might receive, or social services where we can actually have a robust volunteer program that can come in and assist these individuals with their need and have some companionship at the same time. Another thing I'd like to talk about that most citizens may or may not be aware of is there is the Elderly Simplified Application Program. It's called ESAP. It's part of SNAP, which is our Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, and it helps families to buy food. This program was launched in Virginia on March first, twenty twenty-two, and it focuses on persons who are sixty years of age or older. Some of those requirements are that members obviously have to meet the age requirement, and if the benefited individual lives with others who are not applying with them, they are required to buy and eat food separately from anyone else, and also no household member may be working. How many members have we served so far with the new launch of this since March first? Already a hundred-and-forty-eight households. To tie into what I was discussing about earlier in Adult Protective Services, as well as our Adult Services Unit, we are very proud of the fact that we are part of, and like I said, our Adult Services Supervisor, who was promoted within this last year, was actually the creator and the developer of the Peninsula Elder Abuse Forensic Center, and it is a specialized multidisciplinary team on the peninsula that includes a physician, adult protective services staff, law enforcement officials, Commonwealth attorneys, mental health professionals, psychologists, victim witnesses, protection staff, and other agencies in elder abuse field. The center serves each locality on the peninsula, Newport News, Hampton, York, Pecosin, Williamsburg, James City County, Chester, and Isle of Wight. The mission of the center is to discuss complex cases of physical abuse, sexual abuse, neglect, and self-neglect, and work as a collaborative team to plan and execute concrete action steps in order to alleviate the abuse of neglect. The Peninsula Elder Abuse Forensic Center, the PEAFC, was awarded a three-year grant in the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand dollars from the Department of Justice Office of Victims of Crime to provide trauma-informed services to other adult victims of financial exploitation. Services utilized includes analysts of bank records by the forensic accountant, counseling services to victims of financial exploitation, psychological assessments and referral to civil attorney for legal services. We are extremely proud to be a part of that organization and that very highly effective multidisciplinary team that is looked at as a role model across the state. When we want to talk about employment services and financial assistance that our department runs for programs, one of them, of course, is childcare assistance. This assistance helps to offset the cost of childcare so that a parent may attend education or training programs. These services are child-centered and family-focused. There have been a hundred-and-seventy-six childcare clients in Pecosin, in particular, within this fiscal year, we've already served nineteen. While that number may seem low to you all as a collective, I would also like to remind you that through COVID-nineteen, that has been one of our hardest programs to run due to the effects of employment, people's health conditions, so we still remain at being one of the more highly populated, served, the social services department throughout the state. Another program that we also run is called VIEW, and that's the Virginia Initiative for Education and Work, and it's a program of employment, education, and training opportunities to assist individuals in attaining the goal of self-sufficiency, because that is the focus of the Social Services Department, not just locally, but across the state as a whole. It's a shift from the initial paradigm of what the social services system started as. Of those, eighty-two program enrollees, again, I want to remind everyone of the past two years of COVID-nineteen, and in York County, there were seventy-seven, and Pecosin, we did receive five that have gone and completed through those education employment opportunities and were able to become self-sufficient on their own. SNAP is another wildly known program of all of the programs that we run, and that is the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, which provides nutrition benefits to supplement the current food budget for low-income families in our community. Five-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-nine SNAP recipients within this fiscal year, and again, in focusing on Pecosin specifically speaking to this locality, six-hundred-and-thirty were served. We really pushed a large initiative for people to know about that, because one thing during these past two years is the limits for income were changed and raised significantly higher, so people that weren't eligible to receive those benefits before during this time period were. One of the last employment services and financial assistance programs that we run is TANF, and that's the Temporary Assistance to Needy Families Program, which provides temporary financial assistance and employee, employment-related services to enable families with children to become self-supporting. And again, within Pecosin, focusing on this locality, we were able to serve a total of fourteen, which again, through the pandemic, has been pretty remarkable. One of the other big programs that has been an initiative and a need across the state, not just in individual localities, has been the need for energy assistance, which I think we all have seen. The Energy Assistant Program consists of three components, fuel assistance, crisis assistance, and cooling assistance. In Pecosin, we were able to assist with eighty-two individuals within just this fiscal year. Medical assistance, Commonwealth of Virginia offers these medical assistance programs, which includes Medicaid, FAMIS, which is Family Access to Medical Insurance Security, and FAMIS Plus Medicaid for Children. The programs provide medical and health-related services to eligible low-income individuals and families. In Pecosin, we were able to assist and serve one-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-seven people within this fiscal year. The twenty twenty-two Energy Assistant Snapshot was a total of three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-four-hundred-and-ten dollars. Fuel assistance in Pecosin was twenty-three-thousand-five-hundred-and-one dollars, cooling assistance fourteen-thousand-six-hundred, and crisis assistance seven-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-one. Another area that I'm very proud to promote for the locality of Pecosin in York as a social services department is our fostering futures program. And during fiscal year twenty twenty-two, in response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, SHAFI funds, which we received from the state, extended support and funding for older youth and those formerly in foster care. The SHAFI Foster Care Program provided us with additional funding, which we were able to share and distribute to help support the youth we serve with their transportation We applied for and were awarded additional transportation assistance program funds. The funds made it possible to provide one fostering futures youth with two thousand dollars, which enabled the youth to pay his auto insurance policy premiums for an entire year. Another fostering futures youth was awarded four thousand dollars, and with these additional funds, the youth purchased an automobile, which made it possible for him to participate in a summer internship in Kentucky. I have one more that's not on these slides that I would like to add because we're particularly proud of it. There was another individual that within our program and with our request for additional funds was able to pay for two semesters of college at ODU, who was already enrolled and trying to engage in his future in an apartment, and I think that's very important because it speaks to our goal of self-sufficiency and carrying people all the way through our programs, not just the temporary need-it-now assistance. If I could move on to the resource and assistance programs, we do have Service Instate Team, which helps our citizens by providing referral services and advocacy for individuals with limited resources or those in crisis. What's important to know about that is just because somebody may not screen for eligibility for our department, we have an exhaustive list of partners within our communities that we work with and we refer them to, to try to provide them additional support should they fall somewhere in between our programs. With that being said, for those that we weren't able to serve that didn't, for one reason or another, need eligibility, in Pecosin in this fiscal year, we were able to assist with fifty-seven families through that program. Auxiliary Grants is the Virginia Initiative for Education and Work. It's a program of employment, education, and training opportunities, and for Pecosin, we were able to assist with five. Fraud. The purpose of the YPDSS fraud team is to prevent, identify, and reduce public assistance, fraud, waste, and abuse by ensuring benefits and services are received by eligible individuals. Again, another strong point to our localities for having this program, because not every social services department does, and we do have an ongoing fraud investigator within our department to ensure that people that are receiving benefits are those eligible. In Pecosin, we were able to ensure that ten people were able to do so. Resource development programs develop partnerships with individuals, communities, civic groups, and businesses to provide the means to meet the needs of citizens through in-kind and monetary donations and services, and this really speaks to the heart of our communities that we live in and work in. Annual donations for this year were thirty-eight thousand three-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars, and our annual volunteer time totaled to sixteen thousand five-hundred-and-eighty-six The following slides talks about supporting our community, and we had more than I could try to fit within the short timeframe of the presentation, but to highlight a few, we donated as a social services department, twelve-hundred bottles of water to support the Four Oaks State Services and Learning Centers in efforts to help the local homeless. One of the other big initiatives that we kicked off this year, these were things, by the way, previously we had not participated in. We did participate in helping and supporting and having tables set out with Safety Town because we believe in getting in there first to develop those relationships with the children at a young age, often at the time that we get involved or called in, we're looked at much like law enforcement, so it helps if they can meet that face-to-face at a younger age to realize that we're a friend in kind, help and support. Then to just speed it up, Children's Services Act, for those of you that I'm sure are very familiar, establishes a state pool of funds to support services for at-risk or distressed youth and their families, and Pecosin, seven individuals were able to be served through that separate pool of funding. Broad-based categorical eligibility policy allows most eligible SNAP households who receive a non-cash TANF-funded service to be categorically eligible for benefits, effective July first, twenty twenty-one, and households are being screened using that eligibility rules as we take in our intakes. Other slides that I have for you today, basically discuss some of our budget breakdown, which is pretty healthy that we have, and for our federal and state, we do receive quite a bit of reimbursement with minimal in comparison local contribution. And that is the presentation I have for you today.
Wow, that was quite a presentation. Thank you so much for that, Margaret. Any questions, Margaret? If not, thank you so much for what you and your staff does, and thank you for being here tonight. This was great.
Thank you so much.
Really appreciate it. Yes, ma'am, thank you. All right, let's move on to our audience for visitors. Anyone in our audience like to address council on any issue? If not, we'll move on to approval of our minutes, regular session, September twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
May I move that we approve the minutes of the regular session?
Second. All right, motion being second, we adopt the minutes. Any concerns, comments? If not, Ms. Kim?
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Fie?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Mayor Hessel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is seven to zero.
Thanks, Kim. Right, a meth on our agenda, it's new business, it's ordinance making additional appropriations for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, with general fund and FY twenty twenty-two, carryover funds for various departments, and there she is. Ms. Tanya?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, thank you for allowing me to present on behalf of Robyn Bellamy. She's our acting finance director. She was so kind to come back and assist us during this transition period, but tonight we have in front of you with an ordinance to reappropriate funds as we close out the year. We're looking at a total of a hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars. They consist of various things. First is the Police Department carryovers for state asset forfeiture program, National Night Out program, the recruitment and retention program, that was a grant that the fire, the Police Department received some time ago, hopefully to recruit additional police officers to our, our city. So total for that is nineteen thousand one sixty-one, also left off community engagement, my apologies. So those funds will be re-appropriated back to the Police Department so they can use those appropriately. Addition, the Fire Department had carryover funds for state for life program, as well as the EMS fire program for forty-three thousand five fifty-three. So again, both those programs are great, grant-supported, those funds will go back to the Fire Department so they can use those appropriately as well. The city had unspent money on streetlights. If you remember, some years back, you appropriated money to Finance Department and to work with Community Development to update our streetlights. We continue with that process. We continue with that process. Currently, we have $10,636 available. That money will go back to, again, updating streetlights as we go throughout the city. The Parks and Rec events, we had state funds that'll go to the Seafood Festival, $1,745. Those funds were actually received in '22, and we're asking for those to be reappropriated so we can welcome back yet again our citizens and our communities to our city and enjoy the Seafood Festival. We also have $18,445 that we need to reappropriate to our community center. Due to the pandemic, trying to get supplies and contractors out there to complete the task on time was a challenge in itself, so this money will be provided back to parks so we can get that center looking well. Finally, we have library donations of $15,744 that'll be appropriated back to libraries to continue their operations as they've done. I think I've hit them all. Oh, I skipped one. Additionally, we have additional revenue for this year for $23,00304. The Fire Department received an additional allocation of $3,991 for the fire programs. And then, the Police Department received $625 in donations for crime prevention. Library also received an additional $688 in donations to use for the libraries. So, the ordinance is in front of you. If you have any questions, I'm here.
Any questions, Tanya? If not, well done.
No, thank you.
Well done. Okay, well, here's the ordinance. We have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations for fiscal year 2023, and the general fund is outlined.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion made second, we adopt that ordinance. Any concerns, comments, questions? If not, Ms. Kim?
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Thank you, Robin, and aye.
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Kim. Last item under new business, a resolution making an appointment to the Library Advisory Board. Someone have a name?
Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution making an appointment to the Library Advisory Board with the name of Krista Forrest from the Eastern Precinct inserted, and her term will expire January 31, 2020.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion made in second, we adopt the resolution with Krista Forrest's name inserted. Any comments, concerns, any questions? If not, Ms. Kim?
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you, Kim. Comments, city manager, ready?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things, and they are related. You mentioned it earlier when Gretchen was finished, but I just want to sort of highlight, you said, sort of the behind-the-scenes stuff. There are dozens and dozens of city employees that work to get the Seafood Festival ready, planned, ready, and implemented and cleaned up as well. And assisted in that is literally hundreds of community volunteers. Thanks to all of those people, as we get closer, the activities ramp up, and in our case this year, we also had a potential major storm that was hitting the same people that were doing a great deal of the preparatory activities for the Seafood Festival. We're also the same people doing storm preps and all the way through, even to the point of actually being able to conduct our convenience site and household hazardous waste collection during the break between the first part of the two-day storm and the following three days. They're the same people that are out there, both prepping the festival grounds, but also helping citizens with trash service and debris service as well, and there are not a lot of them, so a lot is asked this week, and our thanks go to them. And that's all I have, sir.
Okay. Keith, can we start with you?
Okay, sounds good. Two things, kudos to Pecosin City Public Schools. I think most of us attended the 28 September primary or middle school open house. If you didn't get to, that was a lot of fun to go. Nice to walk through a new building, at least has that new car smell to it, and I'm sure the students all appreciate it. I know Parks and Rec is looking forward to the gym being back online whenever that's possible to get their programs there. And the second thing, on the 7th of October, I visited the high school to observe the traffic loop that was installed or put in over the summer. I'll have to admit that I was skeptical at first, but having gone down there and talked with the senior resource officer and the principal, things moved incredibly smoothly. I think the biggest thing they did, being teachers that they are, was they were able to educate the parents that were dropping off students that they don't need to drop them off one at a time. They can actually stop four or five cars at a time and have their students get out. Matter of fact, most of the students were jumping out, like, you know, let me out of the car type thing, and it just went really smoothly. I didn't see any backup on Odd Road at any time during the morning's traffic.
Hey, thank you, buddy.
Just one thing, Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'm just so grateful for the wonderful staff that we have, and I tell you, they are the best in the world.
Amen.
And they do a wonderful job.
Amen. David?
Thank you, Gordon. I'd like to call attention to the city's brand-new "Pecosin is the Place" sign located at the intersection of Victory and With Creek, decorated in fall decor, and it's obvious that city staff took a lot of personal interest and went out of their way in the creation of that sign, which is very nice in lieu of the Seafood Festival coming up this weekend. So, thanks to Pecosin City staff for their efforts in that regard. Also, since I've been able to retire from my last job, I was fortunate enough to be hired by Pecosin City Public Schools as a brand-new bus driver, and I can testify to what a great job it is and how much fun I'm having. The school offers in-house training for all those that may be interested, and just like to share with the public tonight that the school system is in need of substitute bus drivers. That is a foot in the door that could lead to full-time employment as a bus driver. It's a great way to contribute not only to the success of the school system, but the community as a whole because we're so intertwined here in Pecosin. So, anybody interested, please contact the school board office. And also, related to that, another great way to contribute to the high quality of life that we enjoy and the high level of safety is to serve as a Pecosin police officer. Anybody interested in becoming a Pecosin police officer, please contact the city manager's office.
Okay.
Thank you, Gordon.
All right, thank you. Bud? Yes, first, I'd like to second all the comments made so far and thank the citizens at home and the ones who came to council tonight for paying attention to their city government. I'd like to congratulate Cameron Carr and Jaden Mayhew on their awards for paying attention to the citizen in trouble and the heroism. Congratulations to the Charles Parish Chapter of the DAR for their award and having the month of October set aside for them. And Mayor, you also, you've already mentioned it, but Gretchen did an excellent job presenting the Seafood Festival this year, and I don't know if you paid attention to it or not, but she was actually glowing when she was talking about it, and she didn't have to refer to her notes at all. She is truly into that program, okay? And you dearly did an excellent job, Gretchen. And I'd like to second my comments for Randy and the rest of the city staff. They continue to do an excellent job, and as Randy pointed out, the people working for the, getting ready for the Seafood Festival are the same people cleaning up debris from the storm and so forth. Typical of our city, we don't have many employees, but the ones we have are excellent, and they do their job and those assigned, okay? Do an excellent job. Thank you very much. Thank you, Bud. Jen?
I don't think I could say anything any better than everybody else said it, so.
Carrie?
I'm looking forward to the Seafood Festival also, and in county, going along with what has already been said, I was at the Virginia Municipal League meeting, which is people from all over the state, council, vice mayor, mayor people, and the problems that other folks have, we just generally don't. We're able to keep employees pretty good, and they seem to be happy here, and that just kind of goes to our management, I think. And just to let everybody know, about half of the conference was on civility in meetings, and I think our people are just, I don't know, a higher class or a higher standard, and we don't have those kind of problems where, you know, they have police hauling folks out of their council meetings and all that kind of stuff statewide. And I think our citizenry is just, you know, well above that kind of actions, and it just makes it good to be on this council with those kind of people in our society.
All right, very blessed to live in this community. Let me just acknowledge the folks, David leading to the sign and the decorations around the sign, these are the folks that, and again, you know, all of our staff has participated in making that just a focal point. I mean, it's gorgeous. Victory Pecosin LLC, Wells Fargo sign property owners, the Economic Development Community Recreation Departments, Public Works, Park Maintenance Department, city manager's office, our attorney, Waymore, and his staff, Angela Costello with Angelo Costello Group. Did they not do the sign itself? Beautiful. Hackworth Printing and all others who assisted with this community project, we thank you. It is gorgeous. It is gorgeous. I needed to be there. So, thank you. Any other questions, any other comments? If not, we have a motion to adjourn.
So, moving, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made second, we adjourn. Ms. Kim?
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, ma'am.